You want the clap? We're giving ourselves a round of applause to start in the meeting. They were, so they're not actually in alphabetical order.
They're in order.
They're in order. They're ready to go. And we wanted to give a little extra time because the traffic is really, really messy out there this evening. So, welcome to the last school committee meeting of the 2023-24 school year. This is the most exciting meeting of the year because we get to present our Navigator Awards to very deserving students and this year, staff members. So if, um, if everyone would please stand and we're going to turn around and pledge to the flag. Blowing in the breeze.
Ah, yeah.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to make a public statement before we begin this evening? Okay. Uh, just a few quick announcements to start our meeting. I would like to say welcome to our newest school committee member, Kathleen Quintal. Thank you for joining us on School Committee. Um, we also have, um, Mackenzie McMaster has graduated high school this year. She, um, has done a fabulous job as the student's school committee representative. Uh, next year, we will have Addison Deon as our new fabulous representative for students. So Addie will be joining us at the table at the first meeting of the new school year, um, in September or late August. Okay, so let's get started with why everyone is here. All right. We're going to start with staff awards. So this year, we decided to allow staff members to nominate other staff members because, um, although all staff are deserving of an award for everything you do every day, um, we know that some of you are just recognized for going above and beyond in different areas. And so we wanted you to be recognized up here at a school committee meeting. So your fellow staff members nominated you and, um, they each wrote a little paragraph about you. And so that's what I'll be reading tonight. And then if you want to come up and get your certificate, um, that would be wonderful. So our first staff member that was nominated for a Navigator Award is Kristen Alexander. Do you want me to call you Kristen or Kate? Okay. Ms. Alexander was nominated by Anne Marie Strode, and this is what she said. Ms. Alexander dedicates herself to the students and the school community at large. She is a champion for students with special needs in the classroom and encourages them to exceed their potential out of the classroom. She challenges her students while believing wholeheartedly that they can do more than they ever thought they could. She sees and values every student under her guidance. She's the unified basketball coach for both middle and high school and has supported the Special Olympics. She is also the JV assistant coach for the softball team. She herself played at Rhode Island College and is a member of their Hall of Fame. Her skill set is an asset to the team as she works to develop young athletes. Ms. Alexander also started the girls' ice hockey program at Bourne High School before it was taken over by ORR. She dedicates her time and effort to all students. As far as being a colleague, there are few better. She supports her peers, has served as a mentor, and is always someone you can depend on. Although she went to high school in Wareham, she, without question, now bleeds purple. She's an exemplary colleague and an amazing friend. Lisa Dix. Lisa is our elementary curriculum director and she was nominated by, uh, Jane Norton and Liz Carpenito. This is what they said. There isn't enough time to describe all that Lisa Dix has done for the Bourne Public Schools. Lisa Dix works tirelessly to support teachers, students, and families at the elementary level. She provides teachers with innovative resources, supports and provides feedback to foster excellence for the classroom at both BIS and BES. Mrs. Dix extends learning beyond the school day in both schools by hosting several after-school family and student-focused activities, such as math nights and breakfasts, engineering clubs, summer reading and math activities, curriculum events, just to name a few. As a result, Mrs. Dix helps strengthen the home-to-school connection by creating opportunities for families to get involved with their child's education. Incredibly, Mrs. Dix's impact extends to the community as well. She organizes the Community Resource Fair and Bourne celebrates everyone tonight. These events are critical for families to find support and resources they need and to feel a strong sense of belonging. We are very fortunate to have Mrs. Dix in Bourne. She has built a true sense of community here.
I'd like to thank the Academy. Thank you. I can't, I can't do my job without my, my two, uh, peeps at the elementary school, so thank you.
Lisa Fornier, Fornier, music teacher at Bourne High School. Also nominated by Anne Marie Strode. You do not get much better than Mrs. Fornier. Not only does she devote her time to developing a high-quality music program at Bourne High School, she loves and supports her students wholeheartedly. Mrs. Fornier has a way of pulling out talent from her students that makes their confidence soar. Whether it's at the pep band at football games, the chorus singing an original music composition by the BHS alumni, Ian Good, or the band performing at the annual concerts. She empowers her kids and allows them to shine. Most impressive is her ability to make connections with students. Her compassion and empathy support safe learning environment for all who enter the music room and a safe space for students to be themselves without judgment. It is truly a safe haven for many. Additionally, she is an exceptional colleague who shows the same support and compassion for her peers as she does her students. She is far worthy of recognition as an exemplary educator and colleague. Thank you. Lisa Grablaski. Lisa is I know. Oh, really?
Yeah. You had Lisa Dix.
Oh, you're right.
And there's one more.
Special education teacher at the Intensive Learning Center at BES. And you were nominated by Christine Sheen. Lisa works with every service provider, unified arts teacher, multiple grade-level teachers K through two, a staff of assistants, and outside service providers in order to provide the students in her classroom a quality education in the least restricted environment possible. She takes every opportunity to collaborate and work together in order to make sure that her students are as successful as possible across contexts. Her efforts take up a lot of her personal time, which she does not hesitate to give. Lisa treats every student with dignity and respect. She creates opportunities for students to integrate, and when that's not possible, she creates opportunities for students to access those interactions within her classroom. She goes above and beyond, both when it comes to her time and personal funds for her classroom. She spends many evenings creating content and curriculum materials to support her students. Lisa has also dedicated herself to improving the district by participating as the union vice president for the past year and working to improve employee safety in our schools. Natalyssa, Jean Johnson. You made it in time.
I just made it. I have my prescription sunglasses on. I feel like such a nerd.
You're fine. I'm glad you made it. You can stay right here. Jean Johnson is an ESP at Bourne Middle School, and she was nominated by Carrie Boyslar. Okay. Jean is one of the most kind and supportive ESPs that I have ever had the pleasure of working with in my classroom. I have worked with Jean last year in directed support, and this year Jean supported my students in my sixth-grade theater class. Jean is always willing to collaborate with staff. She checks in with me often, is willing to lend a hand, and is constantly helping out with a variety of things, both in and out of the classroom. During theater class this year, Jean was a constant source of strength and dedication. The students knew that she was always there for them, and I knew that she had my back if I ever needed a hand with anything in the classroom. Jean cares so much about her students. She holds them accountable for their actions, sets high expectations for them, and most importantly, she sets them up for success so they are able to reach or exceed those expectations. When the students Jean works with have and feel great successes, Jean feels those deeply. Just this year, Jean was brought to tears when a student in our theater class helped to cheer up a friend who was having a hard time. Jean cares so deeply about her students that when she, they feel joy, she feels joy. This, in my opinion, is one of the many things that makes Jean the great educator that she is. Jean also excels in the theater classroom. She is not afraid to jump into creative tasks along with me and the students. She knows how to help her students feel comfortable, even if these tasks are a little out of their comfort zones. Jean is always willing to, to take positive risks, and this inspires the students to do the same. These are just a few of the reasons why I believe that Jean deserves a Navigator Award. She is a wonderful person, educator, and I feel very lucky to work with her at BMS.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, back to the game. I think we're winning 4-3.
This is clever timing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Jennifer Mello, ESP at Bourne Elementary School. Jennifer was nominated by Kristy Hawkes. Jen Mello goes above and beyond for the students in our class and all of the students at Bourne Dale. She has taken on the role of PTA chair for BES when there was no one willing to step up. She was able to plan and execute the Booster-Thon fundraiser and raise thousands of dollars used for field trips and enrichment progress, projects. Jen has planned multiple PTA events and has been able to provide well-attended experiences for students and their families, creating the sense of community that our school truly benefits from. In the classroom, Jen goes the extra mile with meeting the students' needs as the final goal. She always has a bag of ketchup packets with her that she collects on her outside travels just in case the kids want some with their lunch. And she'll bring a handful of snacks to make sure no one is hungry when the meals aren't preferred. She knows what every student likes and dislikes. She quietly goes about doing so much to make our school and the district better with a heartful of love for every student at BES. I see it daily in all she does with the students she works with and in the events and fundraisers she's organized that have positively impacted everyone in the Bourne Dale Elementary community. It's for these reasons and so many more that I nominate Jen Mello the Navigator Award. Did I give?
Do I have it in order?
Did I give someone two by accident?
I don't think so. Let's keep track. Sorry, one moment.
Oh.
Is that, there it is?
Yep. Sorry about that.
Almost in order. There you go.
Congratulations. Julie Muldoon. Okay, Julie Muldoon. Ms. Julie. Ms. Julie is an ESP at, at BIS, and she was nominated by Anne Jones. There is no better person to receive the Navigator Award than Julie Muldoon. Julie is the embodiment of kindness and patience. She comes into school every day with a smile on her face and the most positive attitude. I am the luckiest person to get to work with her on a daily basis. As soon as I see her in the parking lot or whenever she walks into my classroom, I immediately feel happy and so grateful that she is there. She's a ray of sunshine. Julie works with our special needs students. They are also lucky to have her in their lives on a daily basis. Her approach with them is like nothing I've ever seen before, and if I could bottle it up and sell it to this world, it would be a much better place. She treats each student with the utmost respect and has a way with them that makes them gravitate towards her, look for her guidance, and they always want to be in her presence. I hope to continue to work with Julie and benefit from her professionalism, dedication, reliability, but most of all, her friendship. Thank you, Ms. Julie, for who you are and all that you do for me and the students of BIS. Some of her fan club sitting right in front here. Lisa O'Hanley, school nurse at Bourne High School. Nominated by Rebecca Esip, school nurse at Bourne Dale Elementary School. Hi. Lisa O'Hanley stepped into the role as the Bourne High School nurse midway into the fall of 2022, having been a float nurse and COVID nurse for several years in Bourne. Lisa helped to immediately address health inequities for students at the high school and implement changes to improve access to healthcare at the school. Lisa has worked to create an open and inviting health office environment where all students feel welcomed and cared for in a compassionate and judgment-free office. Lisa has worked with guidance staff and the Level Up Program staff to improve health outcomes for at-risk students. Lisa is a caring and compassionate nurse who has really changed the health office atmosphere for our Bourne High School students in a positive way. Lisa is a champion for students who need extra support. She's always looking for new professional development opportunities to continue to learn and grow in her school nurse role. Since jumping into her role at Bourne High Schools, as Bourne High School's nurse, Lisa has improved the health office visits dramatically, having gone from two to three students a day to a robust 20 to 30-plus utilizing her services. This is a direct result of the open-door policy that Lisa has created for our students. Lisa has had a positive impact on the health office atmosphere at Bourne High School, supporting our students and staff with compassion and excellent nursing skills. She is a wonderful example of the difference that school nurses can make to the health and well-being of students. Lisa is a wonderful asset to the Bourne Public Schools. Anne Marie Ridings. Anne Marie is a school adjustment counselor at Bourne Intermediate School, and she was nominated by Mary Weatherby. Anne Marie works tirelessly in her role as a school adjustment counselor to bring relevant and much-needed social-emotional learning lessons to our students. She collaborates with classroom teachers and specialists to find the best way to keep our students physically and emotionally healthy. She is always available to meet with students on their own or in several lunch groups as she plans. Her goal in all of her interactions with students is to help them realize their own academic potential by caring for their emotional well-being and helping them navigate the social interactions that can sometimes be so difficult for students at the intermediate school level. Anne Marie Ridings does as much extracurricular work as she does social work in our school. Her many years with the Kiwanis-Kids program helped instill the law of importance of community service in our students. She makes sure that our military students know they are loved, respected, and valued through her work with the Month of the Military Child as she, as she hosts Veterans Day Family Breakfast every November. She leads a school-wide Kindness Week celebration that involves students, faculty, and staff through insightful projects and activities. And as the leader of the Healthy Action Team, she informs and encourages students to make healthy choices and shares them, and share them to benefit, and shares the benefits of healthy, active lifestyles. Each holiday season, she also leads food drives and adoptive family or child gift programs and delivers these donations to local families. As a member of the MTSS team, she has led successful sock drives and delivered much-needed donation to local shelters. She does all this with empathy, respect, and a kind and generous sense of humor. She is a credit to the district.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Frazepka, second-grade teacher. Nominated by Jessica McDonald, also second-grade teacher. And I just got to meet Mike today, going above and beyond. I'm eating. Thanks. Okay. Mike is the educator everyone should aspire to be. Aside from his sense of humor and extremely friendly demeanor, Mike makes it a point to be there for all students. Mike has built special connections with all of the students he encounters. For Dress-Up Day, most of his kiddos wore bow ties to dress like him. When I jokingly told him that I was going to eat his lunch, one of his students ran up and hugged him and said, "You can't. He's a sweetie pie." This past summer, Mike spent his time hand-painting pictures and games to use in math centers. Mike also took a course to help build computer games for his class. He constantly looks for areas to improve his teaching practice. Mike is able to de-escalate very tricky situations with dignity for his students as well as build connections with each student. Mike embraces every challenge with courage and enthusiasm. He has truly connected with our second-grade team and is a vital asset to our school community. Another, Dr. Michael Smith. The infamous music teacher at Bourne Intermediate School. Nominated by Maureen Holden. Michael and I have worked together in gathering funding and materials for the gardens at BIS. We have worked together to provide lessons to students about local pollinators, attempts to save the monarch butterfly by carefully selecting plants to promote their growth. Michael takes time to make connections with his students. He's always available for positive chats with students who need a kind word and a direction to help them back on track. Michael has enthusiastically pushed in with math help during win lessons. Michael's days are long, as he is after-school most days with clubs and lessons. He's always looking to include as many kids as possible to learn about music and gardening, lifelong lessons that will stay with kids well beyond their school years. These are just a, a few of the following extracurricular activities that are run by Michael Smith. BIS recorders, BIS grade-four singers, BIS grade-five singers, BIS grade-five band, garden club in all the grades. Plus, he has created cross-curricular lessons and written an original song, "BIS One School, One Book." To say that Dr. Smith goes above and beyond is an understatement. Thank you. Okay. Anne Marie Strode. Bourne High School teacher and director of internships. And a leader in Bourne. Nominated by Terrence Donovan. I have nominated Anne Marie Strode for the Navigator Award because she is the embodiment of the core values of this community. I have worked in this district for over a decade and never met an educator who is so devoted to her students. Anne Marie bleeds purple in all aspects of her life and has selflessly worked to create the best possible experience for every BHS student. There isn't a single student, staff member, or administrator who doesn't recognize how much she does to enhance our community. Her commitment to this school system and its children is second to none. When people say that education is a calling and not a profession, there is no truer embodiment than Mrs. Strode. Nicole Tongue. Grade-four teacher at BIS. Nominated by Brian Lefkort. Is Mr. Lefkort? Nicole has gone above and beyond this year, both as a classroom teacher and colleague. I'd say every year, knowing from personal experience. Nicole has been a leader and model for all the other fourth-grade math teachers in implementing the Math Model Workshop. Through her participation in the RISE training, she has worked collaboratively with special education staff to create an inclusive classroom to meet the needs of a variety of learners. The fourth-grade team has benefited from her sharing of ideas, challenges, and successes of the co-teaching model. She has also dedicated her time each week to work on the math committee, the data team, and she was the lead for the BIS Mentor Program. In addition, Nicole participated in ongoing discussion with her colleagues related to curriculum and student achievement. Should have brought some water. Mary Weatherby, media specialist at BIS. Nominated by Anne Marie Ridings. Now, did you plan this? Nominated each other. They both deserve it. Mary has been an integral part of the BIS Student Council. She has co-facilitated, co-facilitated a food drive and a sock drive, monitored and supervised all student council meetings and Friendly Fridays. Earlier this year, she led the One School, One Book event that provided every student, staff, caregiver, or parent with a book. Mary also worked with staff to read a chapter of the book aloud so that students could listen to their favorite adults reading a story. The project culminated in a whole-school assembly for the students and staff. Mary also co-facilitates the Healthy Action Team at BIS. She is the talent behind the flyers advertising all of the events of the team. This year, the Healthy Action Team has held, was held before school walking club in the fall, spring. Wait a minute. This year, the Healthy Action Team held a before-school walking club in the fall and spring, square dancing, and autumn food taste tests, crafts and games, the Jingle Jog, before-school pickleball, and will be sponsoring two activities in the end-of-the-year celebration with the PTA. Mary is also a valued member of the BIS and District MTSS teams and the District DEI Committee. She is constantly working to improve experiences of all of our students and staff. Finally, Mary provides our students with books and media that they love. Students love the Media Center because they know they are always welcome and will always find something to fill what they are looking for. When there is a call for help, Mary answers. She goes above and beyond in all of her work with the students and staff and does so with a smile. Jane Norton. Principal at BIS, nominated by the entire staff at BIS. I should have probably saved this one.
Guess they're not getting their report cut stuff.
There are not many staff members in our district who have exemplified achievements in all four categories for the Navigator Award. However, Jane Norton is one of those few people. The staff at BIS is like a family, and that family is led by Jane Norton. She is there for us, helps us, guides us, and leads us by example. We are a team. We work and collaborate together in ways some of us didn't think was possible. It doesn't stop with the staff, though. There is teamwork and collaboration with the students as well. Janey is most proud of her student council, a group of students who have come together to help lead various projects and events throughout the year. Janey is dedicated to student achievement. She knows each and every student is able to learn and will do anything to help students succeed. This is evident with how many students she has taught and how many students come back to see her and share their successes. But it's not just academic success that is important to her. The well-being of students and staff is just as, if not more, important to her. She makes herself available to anyone who needs her, day or night. In addition to teamwork and achievement, Janey has shown her creativity, innovation, and dedication to the district improvement through BIS. Not many principals can say they have helped design, build, and open a brand-new school for the town. She advocated for the best and most innovative ideas for the students and staff. She spent countless hours in meetings discussing colors and furniture. She has made BIS her home away from home, and the attention to detail stands out as soon as you walk into the building. Janey is most deserving candidate for the Navigator Award as she really does exemplify the best of the best in all categories. Dr. Barbara Starkey. Whether she likes it or not, she's getting an award tonight. Nominated by Mrs. Norton. Dr. Starkey embodies the true meaning of our B2B core values. Since her tenure began here in Bourne, Dr. Starkey has been committed to supporting our students and staff in all educational endeavors. She is truly everywhere, all of the time. Dr. Starkey has implemented the district's vision of professional development to help staff improve their craft while moving the district forward. Her passion for all students and families Her passion for all students and families couldn't have been more evident when our newcomers arrived prior to the start of the school year. Dr. Starkey worked tirelessly to support and welcome our newcomers and their families. We're not sure how Dr. Starkey navigated the complex agencies that oversaw the newcomers, but we know this: she never stopped trying and she made sure students got what they needed to be successful here in Bourne. And even though Dr. Starkey is a wash-assure, she sure looks good in purple. So those are all of our staff members that received Navigator Awards. And everyone's been sitting so patiently. It's time for the student awards. Yeah, that would be great. So after we finish the awards, if anyone who won an award can come up and be in a big group picture, that would be great. And then we'll give a few minutes for anyone who wants to leave before we take care of the regular business of the meeting. But you're welcome to stay for that as well. It's very exciting. Student Navigator Awards for 2024. Addison Dion, grade 11. Addie, who is also our new student school committee member, representative at the table, will be joining us in September, was nominated by Amy Jerominski. Addie is an all-around academic all-star. Addie expresses her knowledge through writing incredibly well, as evidenced in her lab reports throughout the year. She engages in interesting discussions around concepts learned in class. Her intrinsic motivation has led to opportunities outside the classroom to gain real-life experiences in the sciences, such as tagging fish for genetic testing or cleaning up the canal on Earth Day. Addie's attitude and work ethic has elevated the level of critical thinking in our class, and I am grateful for that. She's a wonderful person. I'm so lucky to be her teacher. Anthony Donahue, grade four. Is Anthony here? I don't think this is Anthony coming up. Well, I'm going to read what Daniel Golden, his teacher, wrote about him. I'm not sure if he could make it to the meeting this evening. Anthony is always kind and inclusive to everyone. He is always the first to volunteer if someone doesn't have a partner or needs help with an assignment. He is very responsible and works hard to learn and improve in every subject area. He puts excellent effort into all of his work and always has a smile. He's a role model for other students, especially when it comes to displaying B2B core values. Great job for Anthony. Bodie Schumacher. Bodie is in grade five, and he was nominated by Michael Smith. Bodie is an outstanding singer and instrumentalist at Bourne Intermediate School who participates in both band and chorus during the day and after school. He is an example of outstanding collaboration, creativity, and responsibility. He demonstrates commitment in doing everything well and with enthusiasm. He has great tone quality, phrasing, and technique on the trombone, and he has learned to improvise with ease using blues scales. Everything that Bodie is asked to do, he does with excellence and flair. Hannah Buckley, grade six. Hannah was nominated by Carrie Boyslair. In theater class and after-school theater, Hannah has demonstrated excellent critical thinking, collaboration, and teamwork, creativity and innovation, effective written and verbal communication, and responsibility and accountability. Those are all the things we look for in a vision of a graduate. During all collaborative work and in theater class, Hannah has been kind, supportive, and inclusive to her peers. Hannah always makes sure all students are included in group when students are allowed to pick partners or groups for projects, and Hannah often takes on leadership roles within her groups. I have also witnessed Hannah help peers when they are having a tough time by giving them words of inspiration and support, by making sure they know that they are cared about by their peers. I have been super impressed with Hannah's ability to work effectively with students who have a variety of learning styles and needs. She should be extremely proud of how she has helped her peers build confidence in theater. Hannah also asks for help when needed in class, advocates for herself and for her peers, and meets all expectations in the classroom. In the after-school theater play this year, Hannah took on the role as assistant stage manager. Hannah demonstrated critical thinking and problem-solving in many situations as assistant stage manager. She had to step up as the stage manager when our stage manager could not be there due to illness. She helped to keep things organized during rehearsals, worked through problems, lead groups on a variety of occasions. Hannah also demonstrated creativity and innovation after-school when she offered to take on an understudy role when the student had to drop out of a play. Unfortunately, the student was, Hannah was the understudy for, was out the day of the teaser performance for the entire middle school. So Hannah stepped up without complaint to perform on this day, memorized all of the lines and blocking, and in a very short period of time, and developed the character so well that the audience barely could tell that she wasn't the original plan for the performance. Hannah gained the respect of all of her peers in the play by being willing to step up in any situation and wear many different hats through the course of the rehearsal process. When an eighth-grade student asked me before the teaser performance who the understudy was, I replied, "It was Hannah." The student's response was, "Oh, good. I completely trust Hannah. That makes me happy." I am so proud of how much Hannah has demonstrated all of these skills in such a short time that I've known her, and I loved watching her confidence grow throughout the year. And this is why I'm nominating Hannah Buckley for a Navigator Award. Colin Sterling, grade four. He was nominated by Ryan Werner. Colin became a member of the captains' club on February 29th of this year after being referred by his classroom teacher, Mrs. Golden. Oh, wait a minute. I lost my place. Many staff members have noticed and commented on Colin's wonderful improvement in his responsibility and accountability. One of the qualities a teacher scores on captain is responsibility. This was a category that Colin struggled with a little at the beginning, and his score has increased subtly. Colin has also displayed his accountability by having wonderful class time, class periods. Colin is very deserving of recognition of his amazing progress throughout this year. Colson Tucker, grade three. Colson was nominated by Ms. Julie. Colson Tucker has been a member of the captains' club at Bourne Intermediate School. Since joining the group, Colson has proven to be an outstanding role model for his peers. He has shown great responsibility and honesty on a daily basis. Colson shows kindness and empathy towards classmates, often helping others with their work and solving problems amicably. When Colson does well, the entire class is there cheering him on. He is a team player. Emerson Morse and Josephine O'Brien. Emerson and Josephine are both in grade four, and they were nominated by Courtney Costa, their teacher. Outstanding leadership, aw. Perfect. Outstanding leadership in community service. Both students serve as officers in K-Kids. Emerson is the vice president, and Josie is the secretary. The girls have exhibited all K-Kids' values and expectations throughout the year. Their hard work, dedication, and leadership has been more than evident throughout the service learning projects. Great job, girls. Luca Gomez-Bagdonas. Grade four. Nominated by Dr. Smith. Luca is an exceptional student who applies what he learns in one setting to similar academic pursuits. His exceptional work in the music class has led to outstanding performance and creative improvisation in both the after-school recorder club and the BIS singers. Luca also got a saxophone in December and joined the after-school band in February, surpassing all of the fifth-grade players who have been playing since September. It's Luca's ability to creatively problem-solve and apply what he's learned that makes his level of achievement rise to new levels. Though he has played saxophone for less than six months, his performance is at a middle-school level, and his musical understanding of theory and scales is at a high-school level. I often ask him questions to probe his understanding because what he figures out with ease makes sense to him. But his ability to problem-solve is like nothing I've ever seen before. I hope that our schools are able to give him both the direction and freedom to do more advanced problem-solving in the future. It is a joy and privilege to work with a young mind that seems to have no limits. The next person is also Luca. Luca Gomez-Bagdonas, grade four. And he was also nominated by Gail O'Hara and Brian Lefkort, his classroom teachers. Luca excels in all academic areas: math, reading, writing, science, and social studies. When given challenging work, he will focus on the assignment until he gets it. He participates in class all the time and will discuss any topic. His positive attitude and work ethic has been a great role model for other students in class who love to work with him. In addition to his strong academics, Luca works hard in other areas. Luca loves music and signed up for the recorder club after school. In January, he started playing the saxophone, practicing both in and out of school, was able to play songs with the BIS singers. Luca is also a member of the friendship club, where he is a role model here for other students. Luca is truly deserving of this recognition. Lily and Kowsh, grade five. Nominated by Maureen Holden and Catherine Olson, their teachers. Lily is 100% every day in every class. She works hard on her lessons. She is willing to make corrections to improve her work. She is kind and supportive of her classmates. She is an excellent peer model and peer tutor who helps and encourages others to do well, both academically and socially. Lily participates in after-school activities at BIS and in the community. She always uses expected behaviors, and she represents our school in these activities. Lily is a joy to have in class and as a friend in the classroom. We would like to see her receive the Navigator Award as recognition for all of her hard work and for the positive approach in all that she does. Melanie Luca, grade 10. Nominated by Amy Jerominski. Melanie is one of the hardest-working students who I've had the pleasure of teaching. She consistently produces impressive work, asks challenging questions, and engages in thoughtful discussions. Her writing capabilities as a sophomore are outstanding. Her lab report explaining, her lab report explained diffusion rates of plant tissue exceeded college-level writing. Melanie immerses herself in learning and consequently is an exceptional student. I am so excited to see where Melanie takes her future because it will be nothing short of amazing. None of the teachers have offered to give the sticker back, by the way, only the students. Okay. Naomi Rodriguez, grade six. Oh, grade four. That's my fault. Grade four, right? Could just be a little bit short for a sixth grader. You look very mature. Grade four, nominated by Mrs. Tonguey. Naomi has truly impressed us with her remarkable dedication and progress this year. Naomi has shown incredible growth in her academics, moving up by two reading levels. More impressively, her newfound love for reading has blossomed. Not only does she enjoy reading books at her level, she eagerly engages with audiobooks above her level, reading along with them. Her math grades reflect strong abilities and commitment to learning. Naomi consistently puts forth her best effort in all tasks and consistently demonstrates positive behavior in the classroom. Moreover, socially, Naomi has made significant strides this year, stepping out of her comfort zone and making notable progress in this area as well. Nathan Reynolds, grade 11. Nathan was nominated by Anne Marie Strode. Nathan is a leader both in the classroom and on the playing field court. But what makes him stand out is his impeccable character and his ability to make everyone feel included. There is not a time when Nate is not being supportive of a peer in class or a player on the team. He actively seeks out opportunities to uplift his peers, celebrating their successes with genuine enthusiasm and offering a helping hand during challenging times. Nate has an easygoing personality that puts people at ease. His inclusive attitude spreads positivity and encouragement wherever they go, inspiring others to do their best and fostering a sense of unity is what's truly special. Nathan is an excellent student as well as having strong character. He takes academic risks. He participated in the first sports and event marketing cohort, which is a brand-new course at the high school this year. He has invested in the coursework and has produced consistently high-quality work. Mateo Senna. Grade 11, also nominated by Anne Marie Strode. Mrs. Strode is very busy nominating. Mateo has an exemplary character, demonstrating empathy and compassion in every interaction. His genuine concern for others is matched only by his keen sense of humor, which employs skillfully to lighten the burdens of those around him. Mateo's emotional intelligence is fine-tuned, allowing him to discern the subtlest shifts in mood and respond with unwavering support and encouragement. Whether through a comforting word or a well-timed joke, Mateo embodies the essence of kindness and camaraderie, enriching the lives of those fortunate enough to know him. Mateo is also a leader. In addition to empathy for others, he invests in the school community. He is a member of the boys' ice hockey team and is president of the junior class and has helped plan a very successful junior prom. Mateo is a creative thinker. He looks for solutions in different ways and strives to make BHS a better place. Okay, we have a whole group coming up. So before you clap, I'm gonna make sure you can hear all their names. Leah Bailey, Abigail Chusa, Leah Johansson, Patrick McDonald, May Mark, Madeline Parsons, Bodie Schumacher, Olivia Tonguey, Winnie Wilcox, Stella Bless, Cecilia Cullinan. Yep, now we can laugh. That was all of them. All grade five, right? This lovely group of grade-five students was nominated by Mrs. Norton and Mrs. Weatherby. The BIS B2B Student Council is a group of students who exemplify the Bourne Public Schools' B2B core values. Although the BIS B2B Student Council consists of all three grade levels, these specific grade-five members lead the way. These students were leaders for their peers as well as the entire school. These council members helped to support many school activities, events, and causes throughout the year. They promoted school improvement, good citizenship, and created a welcoming environment to all. We are B2B BIS proud. Abigail.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Abigail.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Leah Johansson. Congratulations, Leah. Patrick. Congratulations, Patrick. Nay. Congratulations. Madeline. Congratulations. Bodhi. Congratulations. Olivia. Congratulations. Olivia and her mom both got awards tonight. That's pretty impressive. Winnie. Congratulations, Winnie. Stella. Congratulations, Stella.
Last but not least, Cecilia.
Cecilia. Congratulations, Cecilia. I have Mackenzie. Last but not least, Mackenzie McMaster. Mackenzie came back even though she already graduated from high school. Don't stay away. And Mackenzie was nominated by myself and the entire school committee. Mackenzie is the model of responsibility and leadership. Last year, as a student advisory board member, she attended every meeting, taking an active role in dialogue and planning the student spotlight presentations. Mac was always willing to help, going above and beyond in her efforts. This year, she took over as the role of student school committee member and had a seat at the table and a public voice for the students of Bourne Public Schools. Mac communicates well with her advisory board, she actively participated in meetings, and she was always well-prepared for school committee sessions. Even though she had a full schedule of AP classes, she took the time to fulfill her commitment to the committee and the community. It was a pleasure working with Mackenzie, and on behalf of the entire committee, we want to thank her for her efforts and celebrate all that she brought to the table. Those are all of our Navigator awardees. We can give another big round of applause. We're gonna try to have all, everyone come up, so if all of the students can come up first, take a picture. Okay, the school committee's gonna come up and stand in the back. Yeah. What's that? Is it delightful? Thank you so much. Bad time to forget our water. I know. Yeah, I mean, we have to, yes, yeah. We have to approve a few things.
Yeah, we can just go right to the votes.
Congratulations.
They're ready.
Okay, we're just gonna do subcommittee, we're just gonna do the action items. Donna!
Call her back with a sticker.
Donna! I don't think that they can click us off with all the background. Okay, so just in effort to move it along time, we're just gonna do the action items. We have to approve the BHS statistic textbooks. Would anyone like to speak to that? Sure, we can do that first. Yeah, we'll just do them in order, okay. Second. Okay, roll call vote for warrants and payroll. Carrie?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Carolyn? Okay, warrants and payroll approved. A vote to approve the Bourne High School Statistics Textbook.
I move to approve the Bourne High School Statistics Textbook.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the Bourne High School Statistics Textbooks? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. A vote to approve the student handbooks. So in your folders, you had all of the handbooks for the different schools. There were very minimal changes. I'm not sure if Dr. Strode needed to say anything about the changes.
Or Barbara, Dr. Starkey could.
Oh, Dr. Starkey. And we also have a policy that's going to be included in the handbook, so would you like us to do the policies first?
Either way, very minimal changes.
Okay, so we're gonna take up the policy votes first. I promise, Kat, it's way more organized than it's usually. So, policies subcommittee met yesterday. We have several job descriptions that we discussed. There's a job description, hold on one second. Currently, there are two, well, you got a whole email that explained it, but there are two occupational positions in the district, but there's more caseload. So there's a new position added, a Coda, a Certified Occupational Therapist Assistant. So there's a job description for that. There's also a job description for the Speech Pathology Assistant, SLPA, which will be needed in 2025-26 school year. There are also...
We tabled the ABA for another time, so that's why it's not hyperlink.
Okay. Elementary Special Education Coordinator, Elementary Assistant Principal. So were the two other job descriptions also in the folder? Were there any questions about those job descriptions? Anything that you want to say about them?
I'll be happy to just give the brief version that everyone received an email on. So we currently have an opportunity because both of our Elementary Assistant Principal positions are vacated. Wonderful people are moving on to other districts and other opportunities. And in knowing how difficult that job is currently, to be both the Elementary Assistant Principal and the Special Education Coordinator, it really was a heavy, heavy load on that particular person. So what we'd like to do is, what you have in front of you is a, what we call, straight Elementary Assistant Principal. It's basically like our secondary ones with an elementary flair. The role of the Elementary Assistant Principal really is so much more. They're filling in for the principal in so many ways, whether it be, you know, student emotional needs or being called on walkie-talkies to help out with situations or to call parents or to work in so many different ways. We feel that this role has really expanded. With that said, we have a new IEP coming down the pike next year from the Department of Ed, and it will be a heavy lift to really get us into compliance. We're excited about the new IEP because it's very child-centered and it really looks at the whole child, but it also means that they're bigger and there's a lot more words and there's a lot going on. So in order to do that and support our teachers so that burden doesn't go on them to write the IEPs, we feel that we need an Elementary Special Education Coordinator, which would be similar to the secondary role. We have someone for secondary over the two schools, and so therefore, this is a new position that we feel through all of our different budget reallocations and what we need for next year, we'll be able to fund within budget. So the two job descriptions are there, but I also wanted to kind of outline that we are hiring three positions even though there used to be two.
Any questions about that?
And how did it come to be budget-neutral?
Well, because of all the different student needs, sometimes we don't need as much of one thing as another thing. Think about IEPs or think about student tuitions. We know some students are going here, are not going there, they're in district, they're out of district. So when you look at the whole world of special ed budgeting, which is massive, we know that we'll have enough money in those lines to be able to cover it with a special ed one.
Okay, is there a motion? Oh, well, do you wanna, let's approve the job descriptions as one item.
Sorry, make a motion to accept the job descriptions as written for Coda, SLPA, Elementary Special Education Coordinator, Elementary Assistant Principal.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the job descriptions as presented? Aye. Opposed? Excellent. Okay, and then there were three policies, so... Chris Oliver has worked on making sure that all of our digital policies, all of our digital use policies are up to date. You know, there were a bunch that we voted on the last meeting, and so this is the digital use policy that needs to be voted on. Pull up my notes.
Joe, you gonna speak a little bit?
Sure, that'd be great.
Very briefly. Good evening, everyone. So at the last school committee meeting, there was a round of technology policies or digital policies that were put in front of you that you voted on. What this is, this is a continuation of lining up the language in some of those policies. So this is, policy IME is gonna be replacing policy IB, the current one, which is the acceptable use policy, AUP. But this is now, this is the digital use policy. So it's kind of lining everything up, but it's more than just that. There's a lot of language changes in this policy. And one of the other things, as you can see with IME, E1 and E2, is that those are the pieces that are gonna go into the student and caregiver handbooks. And what I tried to do was, at least for the primary levels, is try to make a lot, make it a lot more kid-friendly, student-friendly. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but there's just more kid-friendly language in that that's gonna go into the student and caregiver handbooks. So that, and then for the secondary level caregiver, student caregiver handbooks, there'd be, there's just more language in there, so it's more great and appropriate. But this really lines it up and brings the policy current. The last, the last full round, I believe, was August 2019 when that policy was approved.
Great. So then we are gonna need a vote to approve policy IMD, IMDE1, which is the elementary level, and IMDE2.
IME.
IME. I have IMD in my notes.
You've done a lot of talking.
Sorry.
I have them up on the screen, but they are, they were in the folder.
IME.
And these will be part of the handbooks, which is why we wanted to do this before we did the full handbook.
Will we approve IMDE1 and 2?
Second. Cool. All those in favor of approving policies IME, IMEE1, and IMEE2? Aye. Opposed? Great. I fixed it in my notes. There we go. Now it's all set. Okay. Is that all of them?
There were two more policies, ADDA.
Yes, ADD, okay, yes. And, all right, I'm gonna do KHB first. So KHB was a policy that we discussed in school committee. We discussed it at one of the meetings regarding faster approval of renewed fundraisers. So if there was a fundraiser that happened last year, if the same fundraiser's gonna happen again, then it wouldn't have to be approved at the school committee level. It could just be approved by Dr. Joe.
A fundraiser for advertising.
Right, fundraiser for advertising. So this is just a very minor update to allow that fundraiser for advertising to, or any fundraiser, to be signed off by Dr. Joe without a full committee vote if it's the same as it was before, the year before. Any questions on that policy? Okay. All those in favor of approving policy KHB? Aye. Opposed? Great. Okay, and then policy ADDA. So ADDA, we currently had a policy for Corey checks in our system, but now we're adding SORE checks. SORE checks, SORE is the Sexual Offense Registry, and these checks will be mandatory for anyone working with students. So the ADA policy combines Corey and SORE checks. And then there are two addendums to the policy. There's ADA-E, which is just the application, and ADA-R, which is just the list of guidelines. Did you have any questions about the new policy ADDA?
No.
Okay.
These are done once every three years, or...
Yes. Corey SORE is once every three years for all volunteers, employees, anyone who's gonna work with kids. And then fingerprints are done for employees, the other level.
And you do it for subcontractors and things like that, too?
Yep, absolutely.
Anyone that's gonna be near children.
This policy, the, instead of making another form that people have to fill out, we just changed our form for Corey because the Corey needs the last six digits of the social and the SORE needs all the digits of the social, so we can, we can use one form for both, so...
Will we approve policy ADDA?
And...
And the addendum, do you want?
Okay, perfect. All in favor of approving policy ADDA, ADDA-R, ADDA-E? Aye. Opposed? Good. Please don't oppose anything right now. It's too late. All right, that takes care of policies. So now we can move to the handbooks because the policy for, the technology policy is in the handbook. Now that that is approved, we can approve the handbook. Are there any questions or did you want to speak to the handbook?
So I can tell you that the principals and I have worked diligently over the past few years to keep the handbooks updated and to move our date to bring them to you for approval up. And I'm happy to say that we're sitting here tonight asking for your approval of the handbooks well in advance of the start of the school year so that when we open the school year, the students and families have handbooks that are timely and ready to be accessed by everyone. We sat down, we went through the entire handbook. I can tell you that we made very minor changes to, just to update language in the handbook, but no salient changes, nothing major to any, any policy or anything in there, with the exception of the inclusion of the policy that you just approved regarding digital use. We did incorporate that into the new handbooks. Just as a reminder, the handbooks are very detailed and they're vetted, you know, by legal. Each of the principals provide a presentation that's very kid-friendly, student-friendly, family-friendly at the start of every year. And I'd also like to acknowledge tonight that BES, the students at BES, along with Principal Carpanito, created a student version of the handbook that they'll be rolling out this year. this year. So with all of that, tonight, we're seeking your approval, uh, for the 24-25 student handbooks for all four schools, understanding that there will be some minor formatting adjustments in addition to replacements of names and contact information. For example, there'll be, might be a reshuffling of some of the seats, uh, some of your positions here on, on the school committee.
Vice President.
Or Vice President, so it's, we just need to update it over the summer. So I'm asking for approval, and then with permission to make those minor adjustments and edits.
I move approval of, for student handbooks as presented. Second.
All those in favor of approving the student handbooks as presented? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Handbooks approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, last, we need, um, to vote on the pre-approval of the grade six Nature's Classroom Field Trip because it's an overnight field trip.
Hi, thank you for sending stream of field trips. You seem to have them, but it's good. I have, this is all in your folder. I have some paper copies, if you want to just look at it. The last two years, please don't give them away. The last two years, we've gone to Camp Borndale, um, and...
I looked at them on... I'm good, too.
Oh, perfect. The last couple of years, we've gone to Camp Borndale, as you may know, they're being sold, so we don't really know what's happening there. So we were able to, um, get a very similar week back with, um, the last place we had previously gone, which is the Nature's Classroom in Charleston, Mass. Um, and I will say pros and cons to the different sites, but I think, to be honest, at the end of this year, Mr. Lundell, who's gone for many years, really felt like the overall experience at Nature's Classroom is a little bit stronger than the experience we had this year at Borndale. Um, so I think, you know, we're really excited to be going back to them. The cost is essentially the same, the bus cost might drive the whole cost for the student, like $25,000 maybe, but overall, the cost is approximately the same. We will hopefully engage in the same fundraising, um, to allow the students to bring their individual costs down and, um, let them pay over the tax as well. So hopefully, we have your pre-approval. Please get home with that. We can tell them about this yet, so.
Uh-oh.
No pressure, right?
No pressure. They know it's coming.
It'll be your fault.
Do you have any students that were, that just came for the day and then went home just because it was at Borndale?
So we really don't offer that, and with the exception of, um, you know, like, significant special needs, but we didn't have any kids that would just, like, drop in, drop out. It's fairly complicated to be able to offer that. Um, so we did have, um, both this year and last year, we did have students that are a part of our intensive learning center who did that, and I think we will seek other ways for them to participate if they want to next year. Um, I mean, we certainly could look at, you know, caregiver or being able to go or sending staff, specific staff, um, for them. Um, so I think, I think that can be that sort of hurdle. I mean, it was an easy solution at Borndale. I think we can overcome that regardless. I think most of the kids who don't go, don't go because they don't want to sleep anywhere but the house, regardless of how far away it is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Move to approve the Nature's Classroom trip for next year.
Okay. All those in favor of pre-approving Nature's Classroom Field Trip? Aye. Opposed? Perfect.[1692.41][1692.41](laughter) All right. Anything else we need to take care of this evening before we go to Bourne Celebrates Everyone?
No, but through the chair, could I have a moment just to really acknowledge the class of 2024 that graduated last weekend?
Absolutely. I know, sorry.
And to just recognize that entire ceremony, everybody who took part in it, uh, from our folks who worked at grounds to set everything up, all the way through to our student speakers. It was just an excellent, excellent event, and I just want to acknowledge that. And just while I have the floor for a moment, if you wouldn't mind, today was Step Up Day in the district, and it was amazing just to see the lengths that the staff in this district go through and the principals go through to make sure that our students are, are prepared for next year. It's just amazing. I mean, everything from pre-K, visiting their kindergarten classrooms for the first time, uh, to the kids in Janus Building, BIS, walking across to see what it's like at BMS. It was an unbelievable day in the district, and I want to just acknowledge the staff and the principals and everybody who takes part in making that event, uh, meaningful for the kids.
Thank you.
That's really nice. Thank you.
That's great. Okay. Summer Retreat is our next meeting. I'm gonna send out a Google form to try and get some ideas about when you would like to meet. I'm thinking we might need to meet at the end of July, um, but I can send more information about that. Okay? Anything final?
We could talk for hours, but there's a fantastic event happening right now, so we do want to get, get folks out there.
Okay.
The Bourne Celebrates Everyone event.
So we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Okay, roll call vote to adjourn. Carrie?
Yes.
Kat?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Kendalyn?
Yes.
Donnell?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned. 6:24.
Thank you.